You hear me now? Okay. It's 6:30, so we're gonna get started. We have a big agenda tonight. So with that, Mrs. Hatfield, can you please call the roll? Mr. King?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Feesel?
Here.
And Dr. White?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. We have some great presentations and discussion items tonight. I do not see any changes to the agenda, so I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So move. Mindy, second, and Lakeisha. Okay. Can you call the roll, please? Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Thank you. Our first presentation is from Jeanette Kenny. She's the Director of Data and Continuous Improvement, and I always have great questions for her. And she is going to be giving us an overview of the State Report Card results as we have them today.
Good evening. Thanks for having me and thanks for allowing me to share, like Julie said, some of the data that we have today. So the State Report Card for this year is, we have some preliminary results. It is expected to be released on Thursday, October 14th. So tonight I'll be sharing what we know tonight. One of the things that we do know is due to COVID, the State Report Card, similar to last year, is not going to be calculated with any sort of grades or any sort of rankings. So any available data from state tests and other outside sources is going to be reported, but there will be no grades or rankings. So to go through some of the different components of the Report Card, the largest one that we often talk about is achievement, and one of those being indicators. So that is based on how our students have performed on Ohio State tests that we administered to all of our students in the spring. And it measures the proficiency percentages. The state kind of level is 80%, is the goal. We would have met if this was going to be kind of graded, 18 of the 21. So we still, you know, have some work to do. We've missed three of them, but compared to some of the other districts that we've talked about, that is very strong indication of how our students performed on our state test this past spring. The other piece of the achievement component is the Performance Index, and this is one that we talk about quite often. You can see how it's calculated based on not just proficiency, but how our students perform over all of the different performance levels. One thing to point out is that first kind of row there, the untested. While all of our students had the opportunity to take the state tests in the spring, we had a large percentage of our population who participated in our CDL program. And many of them, because the state tests have to be given in person, weren't comfortable coming into our building. So we prioritize their safety and comfort. Again, they had the opportunity to, but if they didn't feel safe or didn't want to come into our building to test, they didn't. So typically, we have an untested percentage at about 0.4%. And this past year, you can see, we had 12.9% untested. That 12.9% counts as zero points towards our Performance Index. So while we're not used to seeing a number like 87.9, that is largely due to we had almost 13% of our students choose not to come and test this past spring. Another component is progress or growth, is how we often refer to it. And so what we kind of preliminary have is the growth kind of levels for all of our tested students in these different grade bands and subject areas. The dark green shows that there is significant evidence that we had more than expected growth compared to the state. The light green is that there is moderate evidence of more than expected growth. The yellow, and you can see two yellow areas, that is that we had expected growth in those tested areas. And then anything that is orange or red shows that we had slightly less than expected growth. So the amount of dark green and light green that we can see shows how well our students not only just achieved on the state test, but also grew compared to all of the students in Ohio. When the actual results are released, we will have more information, not only just about all of our students, but some of our special populations, like gifted, students with disabilities, and then our students who perform at the lowest 20% of achievement. So we'll get some more information about that as well. Another component is gap closing. This one is going to be measuring the academic performance of specific subgroup. So it divides, there are 10 different subgroups that are reported. So we'll look at different proficiency percentages as well as growth for those different areas. This is an area that we still don't have a lot of data on yet. Again, when it comes out on Thursday, we'll know for sure. So there'll be more to come about how our specific subgroups have performed. Improving at-risk K-3 readers, and this is dealing with our third-grade reading guarantee primarily. And so it's gonna be measuring the progress of our students in how their literacy is improving in grades kindergarten through third grade. It's gonna look at the growth of how students went from being not on track in a grade level to on track the following year. So it's looking at how students are progressing in their literacy, as well as how many of our students become proficient on that third-grade reading assessment or ELA assessment. For the 2020 and 2021 school year, students were not retained due to test scores. So traditionally, the third-grade reading guarantee, there's a certain promotion score that students have to earn. That was waived across the state that no student could be retained due to a specific test score. That will be reinstated, as we know right now, for this year, and that promotion score will be back. Graduation rate remains very strong for us. And this is gonna be based on the graduates of the year, for the four-year graduation rate, our 2020 graduates. And our five-year is our 2019 graduates. So it's always kind of a little bit of a lag in our graduation rate data. But we had a four-year graduation rate of 98.1% and a five-year graduation rate of 98.9%. Prepared for Success. This is looking at that same cohort of students, so our 2019 and 2020 graduates. As a district, they measure this by looking at things like how many of our students are earning honors diplomas, how many are remediation-free on an ACT or SAT, earning an industry credential, and then giving some bonus points for things like a three-year better on an AP or earning college credit plus credits. So our percentage as a district is 86.5, and that has continued to increase over the past three to four years. So that is higher than what was reported on our 2020 and 2019 Report Card. Some of the highlights is we've increased the percent of our students who are earning an honors diploma. So we're at a little bit over 50%. And we've also started to really increase the number of our students who are earning college credits through the College Credit Plus program. This measure is also gonna report things like ACT, SAT participation, AP participation, as well as how students are performing in all of those areas. So not just who's participating, but what is the strength of their performance. So the State Report Card is really kind of our starting point for how we measure our success here in Olentangee. We really kind of use it as the floor, but we hold ourselves to a higher standard than just the state minimums. One of the ways that we do this is through our district-created Continuous Improvement Plan. So we have many benchmarks that are looking at things beyond what the State Report Card actually reports. And we've been doing this for a long time, prior to even the expansion of the State Report Card to include some of the elements that we had been measuring for a while. So these first three benchmarks are looking mainly at our Ohio State tests, so looking at testing data, digging into that subgroup data, and again, raising the standard of what the state just expects. The next couple are looking at, how are we at the top of state of nation and how our graduates are prepared. So we're analyzing the data beyond just being proficient on a state test. We're looking at what percentage of our students are achieving that advanced and accelerated performance levels. And we're also comparing how our performance is to our comparison districts or our similar districts across the state and how we fall. And then as far as graduates being prepared, again, it's looking beyond those test scores. It's looking at college readiness. Some of it is gonna be based on ACT. But we're also looking at what percent of our students are participating in some of the really rich programs that we have, whether that's Delaware Area Career Center, AP courses, mentorship, teacher academy. The list kind of goes on, but we wanna make sure that our students are gonna be well-rounded and prepared for the future. And then we're also looking at things like financial management, resource allocation, and then community engagement and stakeholder satisfaction. And then finally, one of the things that we feel is incredibly important is having a well-rounded assessment system. So this includes external data, things that we're getting from Ohio State tests, ACT, SAT, PSAT. But also, we choose to give the Terranova Inview, which is primarily our gifted identification. In our grades K to 8, we use AmesWeb Plus as our universal screener. So we're continually monitoring, three times a year, our students' progress in both reading and math. And then we also place a strong emphasis on our classroom formative and summative assessments. Our teachers are monitoring our students' learning and growth every day. And all of these things combined together is what kind of creates the true picture of how our students are doing. So at that time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions before I ask questions?
My only question is on the eighth-grade achievement. That seems to be an area that has continued to be a challenge. We, kind of, what's our plan?
Yeah, so we, pre-COVID, had started working with the eighth-grade math team and our math specialists at our middle schools. Unfortunately, got a little interrupted. But Kristin Bordage, who is our Assistant Director of Secondary Curriculum, has started that again. So we're really digging into the standards, making sure we're teaching it to the rigor. We're looking at item analysis, additional information, so we can really pinpoint what is the struggle? Why aren't our students achieving in the way that we want them to? So that we can provide that professional support and then increase that student achievement.
It just seems odd that it's just one blip, because then you look at nine, 10, 11, 12, and they're like back on track.
Yeah, so the other challenge with that eighth-grade math indicator is that up until that point, all of the students in a grade level are testing. When we get to eighth grade, we have a large percentage, usually over 50%, who are taking algebra in the eighth grade and will never take that eighth-grade math test. So that percentage, or that proficiency percentage, is really, really looking at half of our eighth graders who are taking that test and not the full group, because half of them are taking that Algebra I. And that has been one of the biggest challenges.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So legislatively, they don't require all eighth graders to take the test even if they're in Algebra I? Or because they're taking their Algebra I?
Yes.
You don't double test that?
Right, because they're taking Algebra I. We, the state had submitted a waiver to the federal government to say that Algebra I essentially is counting as their testing opportunity in the eighth grade.
Can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
Yeah, that, that shows that. Okay. Yeah, so the eighth graders who are taking Algebra I, then they're in that dark green area, right?
They are. So it's any, yeah, any student who's taking that Algebra I, which is going to be eighth and ninth graders.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to point that out. Did you have, will you stay there? Okay, in, back in June, I think it was, the state released preliminary data that said students across the state are performing poorly on the state tests. Is that what this says?
This is showing that our students are, have grown more than students across the state and that our students are performing well on the state test.
Great, thank you. And then, can you go ahead to the CIP? Just, like, just the first slide. Right. Yeah, Continuous Improvement Plan. This is something that the board and the administration creates. And it's a step above, as you said, the State Report Card is the state minimum. Our CIP is what we base our report. This is our Report Card, because we expect our students to perform above the state minimum standards. And this is what is more important to me. Would it, would it, you guys agree that how we set these, because State Report Card's minimum standards, this is what truly we should be looking at?
And this is much more comprehensive. You have a much bigger picture of what goes into our success.
And then my final question is, you know, for those growth, the growth factors, how are we even able to calculate growth if students didn't take the test in 2020 because the state canceled the tests in 2020?
They did. So there is a statistical model that they're able to measure that growth even with that gap year of data, because it's looking at kind of the cohorts of students who have that similar test pattern. So how do they perform in the past? Even though we have a gap, how does that kind of predict how they would perform in the spring of 2021? So I'm a part of the State Value Added Advisory Committee, so we were, they presented all of that to us on how that's going to be calculated before it went into the State Report Card.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Marty Argonbright. He's the Director of Pupil Services, and he's gonna give us an update on his department.
Hi.
Hi, Marty.
Okay, so an update from our Pupil Services Department. One of, some of the overview that we'll go over today is our Special Education Preschool ELL numbers and also our Related Services numbers. Also, we have some new information that we wanted to share with you on our CPI training that we were, we'll be doing here. We do annually. And also, an update with the new law, House Bill 436. And also, share some results from our Special Education rating. So those are the items on the agenda tonight. As far as our Special Education numbers, we can just, as all the numbers throughout the district, we continue to grow and increase our numbers with students with disabilities. We're up to 2,916 students with disabilities. These are school-age numbers, grades K through 12. Listed here, we have all the categories of, that we, well, we have the categories that we work with for, with our students with disabilities, which would include SLD students, OHI, autism, SLP, developmental delay, multiple disabilities, hearing and vision, emotional and intellectual, and traumatic brain injury are some of the categories that students that we work with. Also have, which is an increase, 227 intervention specialists throughout the district. And we also serve students with 504 plans, and we have, that number continues to increase too, which is 1,191 students. Preschool numbers, our preschool program continues to grow. We're at 441 students with 29 and 1/2 teachers. We have a total of 29 classrooms. We're in five elementary schools. Nine of those classrooms are at the Shanahan Building. And we also have one classroom at the Career Center. Our ELL population continues to grow also. We're at 920 students with 29 teachers, and we're up to 55 at Languages this year with our students with our ELL population. Our Related Services staff, which include all of our OTs, our PTs, SLPs, school psychs, intervention aides, our clerks, vision specialists. We have behavior specialists and transition coordinators now. We have a total of 285 staff members in those areas. And another interesting number that we wanted to share with you is that the state average for students with disabilities is about 15%. Our percentage for students with disabilities is around 13%. But when you include all of the groups that we work with in Pupil Services, which would be students with disabilities, students on 504 plans, and then our ELL population, grades K through 12, that's that percentage of students in the district that we work with and provide services for in our department is at 22.6%. So that's, that's a lot of our students that provide, that receive services from our department. And then the update that we wanted to share with you for our restraint and seclusion training that we provide our staff, and this is basically to work with students to de-escalate behavior, that have challenging behavior. There are some areas that districts are, must do regarding training and strategies and procedures. One of the biggest things that we are sharing with staff currently in our quarterly meetings from our Pupil Services Department is that the IEP or 504 team, after three incidents with restraint or seclusion, must meet and convene to consider and discuss any additional supports or services that may need to change or be added to to better support the students. So that is something new this year that we are required to do. This also includes students that may not be on an IEP or have a 504 plan. So any student, after three restraints or seclusions, we're required to meet as a team. There's also a formalized complaint process through ODE that is new. And CPI training under the updated procedures that we are working with our staff has returned in person this year. Obviously, last year was, it was different, virtual. So we are able to meet with our staff in person this year, which is a much better experience because they actually get to practice and utilize the strategies that we provide through the training for our CPI, through our CPI trainers. We do have two additional CPI trainers this year that are helping provide this training to all of our staff members. The House Bill 436, some of you may be aware, is a new law that was passed recently that basically requires screening and interventions for students with dyslexia. So this is, it's a good thing that most, well, that all school districts will be required to go through from now on. Right now, OD is forming a committee that is working on creating guidelines for school districts that will kind of lay out what that process will look like throughout the state and all the schools. These guidelines will be released in December. We are in a really good place right now in our district because we already have a training program for students with dyslexia, multi-sensory program, that has been up and going for a long time. So really, we're just waiting for the guidelines to see how we need to tweak our training or program or make any adjustments with the timeline that they're planning to roll out here in December. So we are, we're in a much better spot than most all school districts in the state of Ohio right now. We're really proud of the program that we've been using to help support our struggling students with reading. And hopefully, we won't have to make a whole lot of adjustments once these guidelines come out from ODE in December. And then our Special Education rating was, has recently been out. There were seven indicators this year. There were two less than in the past. They did not include the math and reading assessments because of COVID this last year. So these seven indicators were really compliance indicators, and we met all of those requirements with 28 of a possible 28 points. So again, that's a direct reflection of the many great staff members working together to support our students. Very proud of the work that we've done and the services that we provide for all of our students with disabilities and not only our students with disabilities, but our ELL population, 504 students. So very happy with those Special Education ratings this year. And that's it, wrapping it up. Any, any questions?
Mindy, do you have a question?
Oh, I have a comment.
Okay.
I just wanna commend the district for their dyslexia training. I worked on House Bill 436, and I have the notes from where they're at in the planning. Do you have access to that?
I do not have the, no.
Oh, maybe I can share that with you.
Yeah, that would be good.
But I think that our district, you know, will have exceeded the training
Absolutely.
that will be required of other school districts. So I think we'll be in a pretty good shape.
Yeah, we received, we did receive several calls once that went through from other school districts asking about our program.
Right. What are you doing?
Yeah, there were a lot of school districts who are in for a big change, yes.
I have seen the, what the guidelines will be on the training, but I haven't seen on the assessment. So I will assure with you what I have.
Yes, that would be, that would be great.
But I think we're in a much better position than most
Yes.
other school districts, so job well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the President's Report. We heard presentations next, after my President's Report and the Superintendent's Report and public participation, we'll have some discussion items that we'll be voting on. And two of them I wanna call attention to because these are reports, or things that were gonna be voted on, that we rely on our school board committees to provide us with information on. We're gonna have the enrollment report, and that is put together by the Facilities Committee. And then we'll have the policy update, which is put together by our Policy Committee. The school board as a whole, we have four committees: the Finance and Audit Committee, Facilities Committee, the Policy Committee, and the School Funding Committee. And we rely on experts in our community to serve on those communities, or on those committees to help us to make determinations of how we're gonna act on some of these issues that come before us. The people in the Facilities Committee, they are architects and engineers and building facilities managers. And Dave King is one of the founding members of that committee. They've helped us purchase land and build buildings and make sure that our buildings are operating efficiency when it comes to energy. And they're telling us, you know, when chillers need to be replaced. And one of their, their major things that they have taken on is to provide an enrollment projection update for us every year. Not every school district does enrollment projections every year because they're not growing. We need those projection enrollments every year because not only does it tell us when we need to open that next building, but it also flows through to our five-year forecast, which our Finance and Audit Committee is gonna be looking at here next week. And so that, the work that these volunteers do flows through many pieces of our district. The Policy Committee, they are people, there's an attorney on the committee. There are HR professionals on that committee. And so they are looking at all of the policies and saying, okay, let's see what we gotta do with this. They hash them out before they even come to us and before they go to our attorney for a final look-through. So these people are giving up their time to get stuff done for us. When the Finance and Audit Committee gets together, they're gonna be looking at our five-year forecast. And that's what we do, our major planning on. And so the five-year forecast is required by the state. You have to file it now by the end of November. And so we'll be getting that in October to do the first, at the end of October, to do the first reading and then approve it on the November meeting. So before these big reports come to us, So before these big reports come to us, there's a lot of time spent in these committees. And I just want to thank our volunteers that do this. We're going to hear from Angie, who's been on that committee for years, and she's going to be presenting tonight. But I just want to thank them for volunteering their time to do this important work for us because we really rely on their expertise to provide us with good information. So that is my president's report. Mr. Ray, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to all of our community members and welcome, I guess we have some students from Delaware Hays here for a class project or probably AP history requirement or something, but welcome to them. So, let me see if I can probably see that, or that. I can't see that. Oh, the struggles of getting up there. So I'd like to, I made this announcement at our town hall last week. I was supposed to, according to Mrs. Davis, keep it under wraps for a little while, but I just couldn't. It was just so shocking to me because I predicted this would happen here in Owletangie. But we are now the fourth largest district in Ohio. Columbus, Cleveland, Columbus is the biggest district in the state with 45,460 students, and that is for K through 12 enrollment. If you look at pre-K through 21, because we're required to educate students with disabilities until they're age out at, at 22 years of age, Toledo is slightly bigger than us. But as Mr. Argonbright indicated, with the growth in our population of students with disabilities, that will fluctuate all year. So we're just looking at the K through 12 enrollment and we are now the fourth largest district in the state of Ohio. So something that is just incredible to think about, that in 1990, we were one building in our entire district and we've grown to this point. So, and again, given our projections, which you'll see from Angie here coming up soon, I don't predict that Toledo or Southwestern will catch us anytime in the future. This month, there is a national principals month. So I want to make sure I start out here at our first meeting, celebrating and recognizing all of our principals and assistant principals. Those are the administrators we have that are truly boots on the ground, in the trenches, doing the tough jobs every day of working with our students. It's still, high school principal is still my all-time favorite job in, in education and there's no better, being a, being a high school or, or building administrator is really the best job in education. So as I indicated, we did have our first town hall on October 6th at Owletangie High School. We've got three more coming up, so I encourage community members to come out. We give an update on many different aspects of the district and then have a question and answer session. So it was well-attended and we had a, had a good time there. This is something I'm very proud of, obviously, as you know, three of my four kids are involved in the military, four if you count my son-in-law as a veteran. So Orange Middle School always does a great job celebrating Veterans Day and their Veterans Assembly. So they held a walk and were able to raise $7,000 that will be donated to various veterans organization, organizations when they do their Veterans Day celebration on November the 5th. So again, very good job. And all the buildings do a really good job, especially at our middle school level because they incorporate into that, into their eighth grade, with, with the eighth grade standards and social studies. So I want to give you an update. As I indicated back, a while ago, that we would be giving a health and prevention guidance update here at the end of the nine-week quarter. And here we are at that point. We are ending the nine weeks here this, this school week. So I spent a lot of time in the past nine weeks talking to a lot of different organizations about what's going on here in the state, in the county, and locally. So I want to highlight some of the medical expertise as, as we know, the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC are recommending vaccination, universal masking, and other, in addition to other layered mitigation strategies in schools in order to keep children in school learning. And again, that's our, our main goal is how do we keep our kids in school learning in person? So as you know, there've been recent open letters from pediatric hospitals nationwide, statewide, you know, in Ohio outlining how COVID-19 is impacting children and the importance of vaccination and masking in schools. And there was a recent letter from the Ohio Hospital Association outlining current situation in Ohio with COVID cases, statistics, hospital capacity issues, and staffing shortages in our medical community. So you see here's some points from the Ohio Children's Hospital Association and the Ohio Hospital Association and the key points taken from those letters that were submitted. And the letters outline that, like I said, the current situation in Ohio with the cases, statistics, hospital capacity, and staffing shortages. So, so here we see CDC recommendations to school districts and that schools without face mask requirements have been three to five times more likely to have COVID-19 outbreaks compared to schools that began the year with a mask requirement. So again, the mask requirements in schools are helping us keep our cases down and keep our number of quarantine students down. So here's our state data from October 10th was the latest this was available. And I did have a call today with Central Ohio Superintendent's and cases are beginning to tend, trend down, which is a good thing. So as was indicated with the Delta surge, it predicted that would happen here in, in October and hopefully continue as we move forward here. This is the state of Ohio COVID-19 dashboard, obviously. You see there Delaware County is a dark blue county, county right in the center. We're very fortunate, 69.19% is the highest vaccination rate in the state. So that is a good thing here in Delaware County. And that is keeping our, again, keeping our cases down at a more manageable level. And then our critical factor report from Delaware County. You see there, we're still failing three critical factors as of October 6th. And the indication from the county, from the county health district would be to not change any mitigation strategies unless we get to the point where we're only failing one of those indicators. So I might call with the medical advisory team, this was a pretty staggering data from a very large region, Central Ohio Trauma System, which is a very large region here, all basically in the southern half of the state. On December 11th, there were 566 COVID admissions throughout the state, 29 out of 29 hospitals reported, under 10 medical or surgical beds available, 26 out of 27 hospitals reported under five ICU beds available, 17 reported no hospital beds available. And again, the medical community is not recommending changing any mitigation strategies at this time. And then finally, our COVID impact on Owletangie. You see when we started back on August 30th, we did have, you know, a very large number of cases. There was a point prior to August 30th, we were over 500 students impacted. Those are cases and quarantine. Over time, we did reach a, what again, I would call a manageable level. I think it's, the strategy is, is working. We, as you know, the board adopted this policy to require masks for our students K through eight. I think at this time, that strategy is working and I would recommend to you that we continue that strategy with our current mitigation strat, mitigation strategies for the time being. And then just to highlight some action items, as I put in a note to you, Jeremy Mitchell's been with us as a custodian's maintenance supervisor for a while. He worked his way up through the ranks and started as a custodian, was the head custodian, I believe at Hyatt's, when we moved him into administrative role. He does a great job working with our custodial maintenance staff. He is, is resigning to accept a position in the private sector, so I wish him best of luck. Vince DiTillio, who you've heard from, last meeting, you accepted the resignation of Peggy McMurray as our curriculum director. We've decided to go ahead and promote Vince from an assistant director in curriculum instruction to be the director. And I can tell you, our entire academic administrative team is highly, highly honored and eager to work with Vince here moving forward. And then two adjustments to our substitute, as we've reported throughout the difficulty in obtaining substitutes, many Central Ohio districts have raised their substitute teacher rate. So we're recommending an increase in our sub-rate from $125 today to $155 today, a day. And then our custodial, all of our classified staff increasing their hourly rate as we continue to struggle getting substitutes. And then finally, just as I always close with highlighting important dates, we have a town hall tomorrow. Our end of the first quarter, as I indicated, is this week. And then two more town halls and our next meeting will be back here at Berlin on October 28th.
Now that we're the fourth largest district, don't we, aren't we appointed a member to the State Board of Education?
We are appointed to the Ohio School Boards Association. We now have a guaranteed seat. And Lakeisha is going to be serving in that position. So congratulate her for being, she'll take that role over January 1.
January 1.
So, yes. And then regarding the increase in substitute pay, I did see that school district up in the northern area is going to $200 a day for substitute teachers. So I say that to you, Mrs. Hatfield, to watch, watch the bottom line there. So, okay, next is the treasurer's report.
But I wanted to start the, the presentation talking about our finance and audit committee meeting. As Mrs. Bezel previously mentioned, we will be meeting Monday, October 18th, 6:30, in the Berlin conference room of our administrative offices. That is a meeting that is open to the community. So if you would like more information or a preview of the forecast materials, you're welcome to join us. That is posted on the website if you'd like more information for that. So for tonight's treasurer's update, I wanted to focus on the Fair School Funding Plan and what we are expecting with state funding. This information will be included in the five-year forecast presentation that we provide at the second meeting in October. But because of the length and breadth of the new information that we have, I felt it might be easier to break that up into two presentations so that we can discuss fair school funding and then discuss the forecast individually at the next presentation. So a first slide talks about the base cost methodology. This is new to the funding model for the state of Ohio. The Fair School Funding Plan tried to identify a base cost based on the four components that are in front of you. So direct classroom instruction, building leadership and operations, instructional and student supports, and district leadership and accountability. The percentages that you see on the right side of that are personnel versus non-personnel costs. Knowing that we have a service model for our organization, it's no surprise that personnel is going to be one of the largest factors of that because most of our expenditures are coming from personnel and benefits. So that's not surprising. But that base cost really takes a look at what does each student need to be provided an educational support. As of right now, the base cost total for Owletangie is about $149 million plus. That's the calculation that we have to date. Of that breakout, about $87 million are direct classroom instruction, $21 million are instructional and student support, $33 million for building leadership and operations, and approximately $8 million for leadership and accountability. And that percentage breakout on personnel versus non-personnel is about 78% leaning towards personnel-related costs. The next component of the Fair School Funding Plan is taking a look at local capacity to support the education of the students in the district. So local capacity was ranked in such a way previously that each district in the state of Ohio was ranked against each other. There are approximately 610 districts in the state and we'd be ranked highest to lowest. And that would be part of our metric for local capacity or local wealth. That calculation is now changing. So it's taking our base cost, our total base cost divided by enrollment to get a cost, base cost per pupil. So this number will fluctuate based on each district. Each district in the state will have a unique base cost number. And that is because their total cost will, will fluctuate with the number of students that they're looking at and also the number of enrollment. We'll get to enrollment in just a moment because that also has a change. But this leads to the base cost for Owletangie of just over $7,000 per student. From that, the projected property valuation and income per pupil are multiplied by a capacity multiplier. So that's taking our $220,000 plus times 2.5%. This gives us the $5,510 that you see as the local share per pupil. So what this calculation is doing is taking into consideration what each district can afford to pay. The components of the property valuation and income per pupil were very detailed, too much to put on a slide, quite frankly. But we're looking at value, property valuation in the area, we're looking at federal adjusted gross income, and then also income tax returns on a, on a three-year average to update what goes into that, the calculation of the 220,000. The multiplier that we, that is assigned to Owletangie is the maximum at 2.5. There are about 40 districts in the state that will receive that higher factor. If you have a lower income or lower property wealth in your community, that factor will go down. And so as that changes, it creates that local capacity that we see in front of us. So taking a look at those two components, the overall cost per pupil and the local capacity per pupil, the state share funding that we are looking at receiving is $1,638 per pupil. That's a fully funded model, looking at the 1638. Right now, or in previous fiscal years, we were between $500 and $600 per student. So this is a good metric, not only taking a look at our population, what's going on in our district by itself, but also for each other district within the state as they continue to grow and their information continues to change. Yes, ma'am?
Every school district now is going to have different numbers instead of, because it used to be, okay, every school district gets 6,900 bucks a kid.
Yes.
So now every, like that 7,148 number is going to be different for every school district, but it'll be in that range.
Correct. It will be in that range. The other thing that we will see as we move forward, so for fiscal year 22, we obviously have these estimated calculations, but in 2023, they'll adjust. Because not only will we have a different enrollment number, but our property valuations might change, the federal adjusted gross income might change, and median income for our communities will change. So all of those parts will have a impact year over year. They won't be static and stay static for decades as they have in the past. It will grow with us.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just, and if you notice, that number of 1638 is certainly closer to that number we've been advocating for, for a long time, to be over what the private schools receive for administrative reimbursements. And, you know, obviously, the district has been involved in a lot of advocacy, our board advocacy committee, the board, Emily, and, and our lobbyists. So it, it has taken, and this whole process started probably around 2012 or 13 with Dr. Lucas. And he was, actually, he and, and our lobbyists were the ones who came up with just the phrase "fair school funding" because it wasn't fair that we weren't being funded at the level of what private schools were getting. And, and this is, you know, obviously, it's going to have a huge impact on our financial, five, five-year financial forecast.
If they fund it. It works. This proves that the formula will work.
Absolutely. It will work if it's fully funded.
If the legislature funds it.
Absolutely.
Napkin math, isn't that about $37 million?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Like if I do napkin math, it's like 37 million, right? And we currently get 13.
13. So we estimate, if the plan is fully phased in over the six-year period, that it was originally suggested by the House to do so, to reduce the impact on the state budget, by that sixth year, which would be fiscal year 27, we would be receiving over $50 million in state aid every year. Yeah. So this is very important. This is a huge win in terms of funding for every student in the state and for Owletangie as well. The other idea that is a part of this Fair School Funding Plan is removing caps and guarantees. So one of the things that happened to Owletangie, as unique as we are, while we are very successful with our voters and we're so grateful for that, we are also growing so rapidly that no other district in the state had the same impact of those caps. Because we were so far capped, we're actually underfunded by about $43 million on the current formula. So removing those caps, getting the state on a per-student funding level is tremendous. So we'll continue to talk about that as we move through the project, but I really liked to share this component of local share and state share. I also think it's important to note that there is a I also think it's important to note that there is a local and a state share. Legislation is not required to provide a free public education to every student. It is required to provide a public education to every student, and the local areas are required to help support the kind of education that they want their students to receive. So just wanted to make a note of that as well. So this is the next part that has a significant change for us in terms of components of the Fair School Funding Plan. We will now hear the phrasing "district educated enrollment." Why is that important? We used to hear ADM a lot, which is Average Daily Membership, which is not necessarily students in seats, but what the Ohio Department of Education would count is the students being educated. The difference between students in seats and average daily membership was if you had a student, especially in the high school age range where they were maybe coming part-time, they would not count as a full-time student, and therefore, we would not receive funding for them. So that was a big difference in general enrollment and ADM. Now we are looking at district educated enrollment, meaning if the student is educated in your facility, you are funded for them. The comparative across shows that our district educated enrollment will go down, which might raise some alarm, but I don't want anybody to panic with this because this is a good thing. We are funding students where they are enrolled, and the flip side of this is taking a look at the expenditures that are part of that. So yes, we have a smaller student population count, but as you can see by this slide, we have favorable expenditure reductions of nearly $1.2 million because we no longer have to pay for tuition for students to be educated elsewhere. So they are no longer in our account to be funded, but we are no longer experiencing those costs to have them educated elsewhere. Those reductions in tuition expenses are related to community school deductions, STEM school deductions, that's a tongue twister, and open enrollment out. While we are not an open enrollment district to allow students to come in from other areas, we did have students that were leaving, and therefore, we were charged for those districts, or for those students, excuse me. So the overall estimated results are favorable to about $5.5 million to the district. The initial estimations were about $3.5 million a year. So some of those variances are coming from our restricted aid from the state of Ohio. The student well-being funds, which used to be an asset aside fund, are now part of the Fair School Funding Plan. They are coming into the general fund. So we will see that revenue being posted to the five-year forecast as well as the expenditures for those. That additional expense has been already included in the favorable expenditure reduction number, so it reflects adding those back to the general fund. We also have gifted programming that is now going to be part of the restricted funding. That is roughly $1.6 million according to our estimations. We do know from looking at our fiscal reporting that we currently have in place, we are already meeting the metric of spending above and beyond, that $1.6 million. So those services will just be reported to the Ohio Department of Education through our fiscal reporting that we've normally had without any transition issues. We are expecting some updates on how to report the student well-being and what, how we code that information in our fiscal records to make sure that it can be reported as needed. So we'll have more information about that in the months to come. The other thing that I want to point out is, again, we're working on estimations for the five-year forecast. The Ohio Department of Education has delayed the actual results until December of 2021. So even if we had two meetings in November, we still wouldn't have the actual results to help prepare the five-year forecast accurately, or specifically to actuals. I shouldn't say we can't prepare it accurately. I think we have a really good handle around our estimations. We have, our software program has been updated to include the component parts of the Fair School Funding Plan so that we are accounting for and estimating all of those component parts. And I think our tax information and valuation information that is a part of it is also up to date. So we've got a fairly good handle on that. So we're not expecting a huge change once the actuals are announced by the Ohio Department of Education. Any changes that do come, however, would be included in the May five-year forecast update.
So since it hasn't been rolled out yet, we are not seeing an increase in revenue from the state. Is that correct?
Correct. If you were looking at the Ohio Department of Education reports that are available now, it's flat-funded from our previous fiscal year. And what we have noted in our five-year forecast is that, you know, as we've discussed previously, this biennial budget includes two years of the phase-in model. So we do know that we will have roughly a 16% increase for fiscal year '22 and approximately 33% increase for fiscal '23. After that, it's unknown. It has to go through the legislative process to be put into law. So in our forecast, we are taking a small inflationary gain of maybe 2% on those years '24 to '26 so that we're not overestimating and relying on state funds that just aren't legislatively put into law yet. That's a little too risky to count on.
And you're on that advocacy committee too, right? To continue to advocate that that gets fully funded.
Yes, ma'am. So it's the, what we call, what the group is being called is the Work Group, Fair School Funding Work Group 2.0. It is a group of practitioners, superintendents, treasurers, and also individuals who work with forecasting, work with valuation and in tax information, and coming together and really talking about how can we share the message that the Fair School Funding Plan model will work and that it's important for our legislators to continue to support it past this two-year cycle and get it fully funded. It's so worth our while as a state to invest in our students and make sure that they are invested where they are educated. So we'll continue those lobbying efforts, and as we have more information and more specifics about actuals and what this looks like across the state, I'm sure we will have more information to share with our community to help support that advocacy effort. Are there any other questions I can answer for you about state funding? That was a long presentation, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, we'll wait till you get back to your seat. Mrs. Diesel.
Oh, yes.
Question.
Yes.
Comment. So you have been told by legislators that the community needs to keep the pressure up. The schools are barking, and basically, it's the same voices that keep reiterating.
Yes. They call me Owen Tangi when I'm at the State House. Dale and Tangi. Yeah. So, yeah, so they need to hear from other people, but the communication right now is we've got to get this funded for years three, four, five, and six. Because as you can see there, that's an extra, you did the back-of-the-napkin calculation. Every, Dr. Lucas used to say, every additional dollar we get from the state is local property tax relief.
It is.
And that's what we'll have to keep up and keep harping on our two representatives and our senator, but it's going to take more than that because this impacts every school district. So every school district in the state, Emily's on one of the committees, and we'll be doing it as well, will continue, we have to continue to advocate, and I know someone's head's going to blow off because I keep talking about school funding, but we have to continue to educate our elected officials by saying, this formula works, it's in place, you passed it, now you have to fund it.
Glad you brought that up. All right, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am. Sure. Absolutely, yes, please. So public participation, I'm just going to go through the guidelines of that for the community who is with us this evening. Public participation is the community's time to present any ideas, issues, or concerns to the Board of Education. Public participation is not a dialogue or discussion. It is an opportunity to present any ideas or concerns to the board in a public forum. The Board of Education will respectfully listen to comments, and we ask that our participants respectfully listen as well. Public participation will last for a maximum of 30 minutes. Each participant has a limit of five minutes to address the Board of Education. Participants will not be able to cede their five minutes to another person, and participants must state their full name and address when stepping to the podium, which is in the front center. These policies and procedures are supported by Board of Education Policy 01691. With that, I have the container for those who have signed up for public participation. I'll open it, and we'll have our first participant join us up front. May I please have Lawrence, I believe it's Moleman? Did I say that correctly? Thank you. If you would, please state your name and address, and I'll start your five minutes.
My name is Lawrence Moleman. My address is 694 Covered Bridge Drive, Delaware. I guess I'm a firm believer in the Constitution, which gives us, especially in the First Amendment, the Bill of Rights, the right to participate in our government. We're a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. So the fact that the National School Board Association has labeled parents that come to school board meetings as domestic terrorists, I would recommend that the school board here withdraw from the National School Board Association. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I'm sorry.
Members of the National.
You are members?
We are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drop that membership years ago, so, thank you. Next.
May I have Mr. Tim LaPlante? I believe I'm, did I pronounce it correctly? Thank you, sir. My apologies. If you would, please state your name, I will start.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tim LaPlante, 8305 Trisha Price Island Tower. I'm here to tell you about a, talk about an incident that happened last year with my now-current third graders, who are very much looking forward to Pioneer Day coming up this year, but they were second graders at the end of last year. Our students came home very excited one Monday after their normal school days because they loved going to school. And just in our normal conversations, I happened to ask my twins, boy-girl twins, both in the same class in the second grade, you know, what did they do today and what was going on? And they kind of talked about their normal things that were going on. Well, then, what had come up was, is my youngest daughter said, Dad, our teacher said we get to dress as each other tomorrow. I get to dress as a boy. My son gets to dress as a girl going into class. And this was promoted by the teacher. And so digging in a little bit further, trying to ask what was going on with this, you know, is it a fun week where it's like a crazy hair day or something like that where they get to dress as each other? And no, it really wasn't, really wasn't that. So as we kind of talked a little bit more, I emailed the teacher, and he very promptly responded back and said, we are talking about what it means to be a boy and a girl this week. And so in that email, he addressed a couple books that they were talking about, Riley's New Dress, Jacob's Red Hair, I believe, and Red Crayon. So these are all literature that was not approved by the school board. This is all literature that that single teacher brought in for that week to talk about. And it wasn't just one mention of this, of transgender or gender issues. It was a complete week. It was an hour a day that this teacher was going to focus on this. And this was last year, in 2020, when the kids spent half the year out of school, when they, and this was their time in school, it was within the last couple weeks of school that they were going to talk about this. So we promptly emailed the principal, and she had no recollection what was going on with this. Nothing was approved, nothing was going on with this. And we found out, you know, through the community, there were other teachers that were also not promoting this. He was the only teacher in second grade that was promoting this at the time. So after a lot of discussion and talking about this with them, you know, the principal did do the right thing, and they did cancel the week, and this was, I think, Tuesday, or Wednesday or Thursday of that week. The damage was already done. Our kids were already talking about gender issues. This is second grade. These kids were seven years old, and they were talking about gender and transgender issues. These topics are for teenagers, they're for high school, they're for older-aged kids, not for second graders. So what I'm asking you to do today is, yes, you might consider this a rogue incident, we've heard that a lot of times from a lot of these other things, however, this is not a rogue incident. This is happening repeatedly, over and over again. So what I ask you is, let's hold our teachables responsible. Let's talk to them, let's not teach non-approved district materials. If they are, there needs to be consequences for it, and we were truly hoping that the teacher's contract would not be renewed this year, but he was, and he's back. So I don't know if he got one warning or what happened with it, but this really needs to be addressed. If you're going to hold a student's accountable, you need to hold the teacher's accountable as well for this material. Thank you.
May I please have Danielle Hayden join us at the podium?
My name is Danielle Hayden, my address is on record. 5963 Ganey Court. Okay. I have a couple of experiences, but because of time constraints, I'm going to jump down to my second experience, which was when the principals at Berkshire, as well as Mr. Rafe, denied me of a parent-teacher conference in 2014 after I questioned why low math test grades were not entered before quarter-end into Power School. Mr. Rafe emailed me that any concerns about quarterly deadlines would be handled through the teacher evaluation process, and yet, the principal did not complete an evaluation for this teacher. Not only that, two years went by without this administration having a process in place to verify documented and required teacher evaluations were completed. You see, if a teacher's marked accomplished, the written evaluation is to take place every three years, and if marked skilled, then every two years with a conversation to take place in off-years. The teacher in question should have had a written evaluation in 2017, 2018. In 2019, Mr. Wright, Assistant to the Superintendent, revised the principal's evaluation to include a written reprimand after I notified them of the error, which in part stated, "Principal's lapse in process has the potential to not only invalidate your work with your staff, but undermine the integrity of the evaluation process." And he goes on to say, "The principal was still marked accomplished, and this is the highest rating, which means by definition a leader and model in the school and district, exceeding expectations for performance." I emailed each board member, except Dr. Wise, who was not on the board at the time, and notified them that this administration did not have a process in place for two years to verify the documented and required teacher evaluations were completed. Under the responsibilities of a superintendent, it states, "Ensure all aspects of district operation comply with state laws and regulations, as well as board contracts and policies." Our school board, under the direction of Mr. O'Brien at the time, did not complete an evaluation of our superintendent, though the board had completed annual written evaluations for him each year prior. The following year was Board President Ms. Patrick, and in this written superintendent evaluation, there was nothing that stated he fell short of one of his responsibilities. Ms. Patrick had stated, under his evaluation, "Policies and governance is an area where we as board members can grow. We rely heavily on this administration." The board is relying on this administration, the very administration that had a lapse in judgment and process in place. I questioned the principal's rating of accomplished with a written reprimand as a rep for ODE found the rating unusual. Mr. O'Brien had discussed the rating with Mr. Rafe and Mr. Meyer and was comfortable with the outcome. He concluded in his email to me that while you may have a different opinion of Mrs. Baker, two of my kids went there, and we, students and parents, had a great experience there. Under Board Docs, board members are to remain objective, not subjective.
Employment or anything like that in an open session, so please do not discuss any employment issues in a...
So please do not discuss any employment issues in a, in a, in an open session. We can only do that in executive sessions.
This is an email that I was given.
Yes, we can't discuss it in an open board meeting.
Okay. Well, okay. Sorry. Um, well, then, let me just jump down to here. Under evaluations, Mr. Rafe wrote in Mr. Wright, his assistant's evaluation, um, that he performed in an outstanding, outstanding supervision, conducts thorough evaluations of all of his principals, and were there any improvements? He wrote, "I have no specific areas of improvement to note at this time," even though for two years, the information wasn't documented. So is there transparency in this administration and the board? Willfully omitting information may be considered conduct unbecoming under accurate reporting. I posed this question last week in the town hall, but it wasn't, it was posed in a very vague manner. I continue to hear this administration say, "We can do better." I couldn't agree more. Transparency, accountability, and integrity are all important qualities in leadership and in evaluations. An annual written evaluation should be documented. It's time to stop sweeping difficult matters under the rug. At some point, someone is going to find the dirt. Thanks.
Thank you. May I please have Richard Carrico join us? Did I pronounce your last name correctly? Thank you. If you would please state your name and address for the record, and I will start your time.
Yes, ma'am. Richard Carrico, 7112 Lewis Center Road, Galeno, Ohio, 43021. I'd like to first start with, um, with your diversity committee that you develop. I guess I can understand why you'd want to do something like that, considering other things you've done, but I started looking at their calendar, and it was, kind of piqued my interest a little bit. You got things like International Day of Older Persons, Digital Equity for All Ages, what they're going to cover there. Then we got World Habitat Day. The United Nations designated the first Monday of October every year for World Habitat Day. Terrific. World Teacher Day. Now, that one I like, okay? Then we get into the interesting stuff. It's like, um, Navrati, some Hindu thing. Means nine nights, beginning on the new moon, ending in this something. It is dedicated to the goddess Durga, who had nine incarnations as a power to, of good to destroy demons. Well, that's really trick, except, you know, that kind of seems to me like we're getting into religion. I mean, if that was saying something about Jesus Christ right there, you guys would be having a conniption. All right? And then there's another one that go down in here about, um, Durga Purja. You guys have got something going on here for the, for the Hindu religion or something, but it's like, um, "This celebrates the divine creative force of the universe and honors the ten-armed goddess Durga, wife of Shiva, and the destroyer of demons." Well, that's great. Again, I point out, that's religion. Okay? You don't see anything in there about, um, you, you know, Christianity. You put Jesus Christ in there, you put anything about, anything from Israel in there, and everybody in the media would be having a conniption. You go down again, more from, 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 um, Hindu. All right? Then we start on, we're gonna, we're gonna start on Islam. They're, they're going, they got this on their calendar for Islam. All right, that's great. We're going to, is the ann, anniversary of the birth of the prophet Muhammad. The guy had a six-year-old wife. Okay? We're going to celebrate that. Okay? You hired a guy that's a PhD. He's got an assistant. And these people have two working for them, right? Okay. Now, just, just to make a point here, you had Mr. Argonbright get up here and talk about the special needs kids that go to school here. He's got a lot of them. I've worked with Mr. Argonbright. He is a, he's on top of things. He's a quality guy. I mean that. So, you know, he's, he says he touches basically 22.6% of the students. Then you put the dyslexia stuff on there, and that's even more. Okay? So you just, you hired four new people. For what? All right? Why did, it would have helped if you'd have basically hired people to help him. All right? This is, or those, those eighth-grade test grades in math, that sure would have helped too. But we're doing this. But I guess with your CRT record, okay? CRT, basically, race is the primary way to identify and analyze people, and consequently posits a racial hierarchy that supposedly exists with whites at the top and blacks at the bottom.
One minute, please.
Excuse me?
One minute, please.
Okay? Whites have to admit their culpability, you know, and all that. It's wrong. That is a wrong thing you guys are still pushing. And, oh yeah, by the way, Mr. Rafe, before I run out of time here, October 6, townhall.com, kids five through seventeen, uh, COVID, COVID cases decreased 79% in the month of September in Florida, in all, in fifty-four counties in Florida where there is a no masking policy or parental opt-out rule. Okay? Of the thirteen other counties in Florida that have, uh, an imposed mask, the schools only decreased by 77%. So, you know, before you start touting the, you know, the powers that be, that basically say, "We want this in there," you might want to check and see exactly where their data is, because some of it's not even fact. They've got, they've got, um, Project Veritas that has some of the people that actually develop.
That's fine, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I please have Tracy Curry join us at the podium? How do I do with your last name, then? Great, okay, thank you. If you would please state your name and address, and I will start your time.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Curry. I live at 2793 Coltsbridge Drive. I would like to clear up misinformation in the community about parents that are speaking up in board meetings, sending emails to administration, and sharing concerns with others on social media. Our goal is not to tear our teachers down or to battle against them. We have the right to be a voice for our children. As a parent, I want teachers to be transparent and held accountable for what they're teaching our children, and we want them following board policies and procedures. The majority of teachers are wonderful and steer clear of controversial materials and topics. I have two children in the district. I have had pretty much positive experiences the whole time my kids have been in Olentangie. Um, I've had teachers that have gone above and beyond the call, call of duty. However, it's extremely disheartening in the community, um, starting that there are community members out there who are calling parents who are concerned about these things that we're seeing in the district, including assignments, morning news, bulletin boards, signage, literature, and professional development, um, when they're calling us names. And I quote from a community member's Facebook page, who also has a very popular blog, that she called us, that we, we, uh, "They are racist, white supremacists, homophobes, and trans haters. We are immediately labeled and judged by a group of people that preach tolerance, acceptance, belonging, kindness, and diversity, because we don't share the same beliefs they do. This is bullying. You must actually practice what you preach, or it means nothing. These people know nothing about me or others they're judging. Many of us come from very diverse families and backgrounds, but our backgrounds or inexperiences don't matter to these people, because we have conservative values. My family has a history of depression, suicide, and addiction. I have family members who are gay, and never mattered to me or my family growing up how they lived their lives or who they dated or married. We love them. This is the way I was raised. They're kind and fun to be around. In addition, my su, my cousin was trans. My family supported him because we loved him. We knew his heart. He was kind, attentive, funny, smart, respectful. Unfortunately, my cousin took his life twelve years ago. My best friend's brother is gay and married. She's from conservative family. My twelve-year-old step-niece is struggling with identity right now and has been for some time. She's experienced trauma and abuse from her biological mother, and her mother is a drug addict. For people to think that all conservative families are homophobes and trans haters or think we don't understand or don't support them, that's a huge falsehood. Maybe you don't understand where we're coming from. For community members to make these types of comments, it's hurtful, because you don't know anything about our private lives. And that's the way it should be, in my opinion. Generally, I wouldn't broadcast this information, but I'm tired of people judging me and others who share similar values. This is just a fraction of things my family has struggled with. Not wanting materials, books, and resources shared and taught in school has been misinterpreted as hate and is completely wrong. I am a conservative, but I still love and show respect and kindness to people that I don't share the same race, sexuality, or gender identity with. There's so much more to people than this, and I believe most of us have more in common than we give each other credit for. And I think where we differ is our belief in how these discussions, or belief that these discussions are the role of the parent and not the schools. I'm very open with my children. Um, if they ask me a question, I'm more than willing to share and discuss it with them. I just don't think that's the role of a school. I do question the virtue signaling in our schools and the gearing of materials to focus on sexuality, gender, and race. It is helping, is it helping or harming our children? Million, million-dollar question. How are we measuring this? Why do we need signage in our schools identifying safe spaces? And I am an ally. Shouldn't our schools be safe spaces for everyone? If they are, we do not need signs. I think it segregates children, and I think it's harmful. I think it cues our children to focus on differences instead of other characteristics and interests they may share. In my opinion, it feels like social justice is being turned into revenge, and it feels like revenge is being directed at our children. Revenge for things their children had nothing to do with, and how is this fair for them? School used to be fun and lighthearted, and it's turned into be centered on diversity, equity, and inclusion for elementary kids. And our elementary kids are loving, kind, and accepting. They do sometimes make mistakes, of course, but they deserve grace. Where and when does it stop? My kids are Lebanese and Canadian. Can I ask, where do they fit into these initiatives? Are we going to celebrate my heritage or teach the, uh, where my fam, my husband's family and why they fled Lebanon? Honestly, it doesn't matter. My husband and I can teach them and tell them the stories about our families. We're not victims of our past unless we allow ourselves to be. I could write another whole speech on that. We all have struggles. Everyone's story matters. I would like the Equity and Inclusion Committee to focus on more diverse subjects that affect our children.
That is fine, please. Thank you. I don't want to have to yell to continue public participation. May I please have Ms. Katie Hess join us up front? Thank you. Would you please state your name and address for the record, and I will start your time.
Hi, it's Katie Hess, 7866 Mannercreek Street. Tonight, I'm here to be heard, and I would like you to share my message with others. And I'm speaking directly to you, the school board members. I have three Olentangie lifers in the school system. Between them, we've attended one elementary school, two middle schools, two high schools. My children are all very different, and what I need from each school is different for each child. I keep hearing that Olentangie's broken, and it upsets me. But I started thinking about it, and I agree, something is very broken. It feels like we're spending a lot of time talking about the negative things, and we're not talking about our success stories enough. And that problem starts with me, because I have a lot of success stories that I'm not sharing. So here it goes. Thank you, board members, for making hard decisions and listening to the opinions of everyone. You are part of our success story. Our success is built on the backs of custodians that make our schools immaculate. They give our kids a sense of pride. Even the oldest building is as clean as they come. The papers my kids drop get picked up, the walls get washed, and the windows, and the school is safe. These custodians smile at our kids, and they offer high fives. I don't care if it's Chris at Shanahan, that's this teaching respect to a rowdy lunch table instead of sending them to the office, or if it's Addison and Max at Oak Creek that allowed a young man to spend an hour a day after school, every day, cleaning with them so that he could learn consequences, which backfired on me, because at the end of the week, that young man asked if he could continue helping, simply because he enjoyed their company. Our successes are built on the backs of our staff. They sit in a room with children that struggle to stay in school or find the strength to keep waking up every morning. And then they turn around and they talk to us grown-ups, who want our kids to wear masks in school, or don't want our kids to wear masks in school, or something like that. It's Ms. Zeller that met with my son each time he stretched to really find out where the boundaries are. She somehow took that opportunity to empower him to find a better version of himself. It's Kelly Smith with a warm smile at the elementary school in the front office as young parents doubt themselves. It's Mr. Griffiths at the high school at Olentangie, that has a way of reprimanding, reprimanding, and building a child up at the same time. It's Rambo and Wright in the office at the Orange Middle School. They made my daughter feel safe as she started to transition into middle school, and my son, who has not attended that school for four years, still receives cards and pencils from them, because they remember how he was always losing his pencils. It's Julie Lather, the principal at Oak Creek Elementary School. My world came to a screeching halt with a sick child. She stood beside me, and she said, "We're going to do this together," and she meant it. She worked with my family, she worked with the teachers, she moved mountains. She helped me do hard things. It's Mr. Gunther, a guidance counselor at Orange High School, who consistently has gone above and beyond. I had a child that was in Cleveland Clinic for six weeks. Mr. Gunther worked with Cleveland Clinic to coordinate daily lessons with my son. He would report back process. He kept his teachers updated. He still made time to care about the real situation at hand. Mr. Gunther was, in fact, so impressive that the Cleveland Clinic staff commented multiple times that he was the best of the very best that they had ever worked with. Our success story is built on the back of our, on the backs of our teachers. God bless our teachers. Our success story is Betsy Adair, who's taught all three of my kids. We named our family dog after her. She taught my children, she wiped tears, she hugged them, she loved them as her own. She was consistently a safe space for them. She pushed one to lead, she kept one in check, and she quietly encouraged the other to find her confidence. It's Brekis Bar that had a hard conversation with me, telling me what my child needed to succeed. She also helped me get the tools and resources to be successful. It's Ms. Hecker at the Orange High School, that caught my child getting by, and she demanded more. She mentored and tutored and encourages him. I believe that he would call her a friend. It's Mr. Long at the Olentangie High School that works harder than I could ever expect to keep my son on track, focused, and successful in school. He is teaching him as much about life as he is the classroom. It's Mr. Nicola at the Orange High School that's crazy enough to build a broadcast program where kids find a creative outlet and the opportunity to find their niche outside of a traditional classroom. I have never asked for help from a teacher, a school, an administrator, and not been supported. I have never needed resources that were not provided. I have never been felt, I've never felt like my school system was broken. There is nothing I have asked for that I didn't receive. Olentangie is our success story. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we have gone through, um, all of the public participation signups within time, so I think we're good to move to the next item. Next, we have Angie Bryant, and she's going to be giving the Facilities Committee enrollment projection update. Thanks for doing this, Angie. Angie is doing this tonight, because our, our chairperson couldn't be with us, so you've sat through enough of these, Angie.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. Sorry, I've never done this before. Our report tonight is very similar to what you've seen in the past. There's a few changes, but in general, you've kind of seen this before. Everything that you're seeing this year is based on the enrollment report that came out on September the 8th. Uh, this is the Wednesday of the third full week of school. This is the same one that we use every year. Uh, this is our projected versus our, versus our actual enrollment. Um, as you can see, our projections for this year, we're pretty close. We're off by 0.75% for PK through 12. We think that's pretty good. Uh, this is the projected enrollment that we are anticipating over the next ten years. So from 2021 to 2031, we expect an increase of about 4,800 students over PK through 12. And I'll be breaking that down a little bit better than that. This is the graph of that. The yellow is the last ten years, the green is this year, and the blue is the next ten years. Um, the only dip that you'll notice was last- The only dip that you'll notice was last year, and obviously, we attribute that to COVID. Just an interesting graphic from 1977 to 2031. You can see our dips of enrollment. We haven't had any really until last year. This is just a graph to show you what we've kind of done over the last few years, our 2016 guesses, 2017 up to this year. As you can see, we've stayed pretty consistent. They were going up every year a little bit until last year, and then we dipped it actually overall even this year. Interestingly, Delaware County Regional Planning Commission does a similar report to show the population growth in Yulin Tangi. And they've done the report, we've shown the graphics from 2017 to 2020. There's also changes a little bit every year for what they think. We do want to point out that from 2010 to 2020, the Yulin Tangi total population growth was 28%, and the student population growth was 37%. The 2020 to 2030, they're currently saying the total population is projected to grow 22%. We are actually predicting a 21% population growth for our students. But it's very similar to what we come up with, which we're pretty happy about. This is our pre-K enrollment, historically, the last 10 years, this year, and then the next 10. Pre-K is done as a percentage of kindergarten. We have found that to be the most accurate for estimating our projected enrollments. Going forward, we have decided to use 32% of the kindergarten enrollment for what we anticipate the pre-K enrollment to be. The biggest thing that we do is estimating our kindergarten enrollment. These numbers are usually based on our single-family permits. Sorry. It's done, we take the numbers from August to August. Typically, we have been estimating around 700 new housing permits a year. We were surprised last year during COVID that the numbers went up to 605, and then they jumped a lot this year to 802. This caused us to change how we were tapering our estimates going forward in the future years. And actually, one of the graphics on this is wrong. The new single-family is being tapered from 700 to 300, not 500 to 300. And the new multifamily is 140 to 60. And we just changed that because we're not really seeing the decrease that we thought we were going to be seeing moving forward. So we've slowed down that growth number. This is just the kindergarten-only enrollment. Just the history of the district, you can see the years that it dipped, and the green being this year, and then the blue, what we are predicting the next few years. This is our grade advancement for all of our other grades. Grades 2 through 12 are just done on a percentage of growth from a two-year average. On the graphic, we're showing, in blue is the average two-year average. But for our projections, we always use the last two years of the average, which is the lower number. This is our elementary school enrollment, historic and moving forward. Again, the green is our current year that we're in right now, and you'll see the only dip still was last year. So how we estimate what buildings are needed for elementary school is just based on the number of classrooms. So we have separated each grade by the ratio that's required and determine how many classrooms that we need. Thanks to Shell Meadows opening this year, we were able to add 35 new classrooms. So it really helped out with our spacing in the elementary schools. Something else that did change this year, I guess because of our success with special needs, the pre-K SLC has increased from 12% to 14% of our pre-K numbers. And that does affect how much classroom space that we're able to get out of those kids. So this is our projected elementary classroom needed. Thanks to Shell Meadows opening this year, as you can see, we have plenty of classrooms. We start to get in a little bit of a deficit in the '25-'26 school year. Once we dip below what is considered half of an elementary school, things start to get a little interesting when we have to move kids around because this assumes that everybody is distributed evenly. Now, this is a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. Previous two years, we were showing that Elementary 17, we anticipated being needed in the '23-'24 school year. And now, we don't think it's going to be necessary until the '25-'26 school year, which is nice. Although that's, Elementary 17 was on the previous levy, obviously, it's not going to be needed for a while. However, right after that, we do anticipate 18 and 19 being needed not too shortly after. Middle school enrollment actually just dipped a little bit last year, and we anticipate it also climbing over the next 10 years. Middle school capacity is also based on the core classroom inventory. We did break ground on Middle School Number 6, so we will gladly be adding 46 more classrooms here in a couple of years. As we look at the Middle School Classroom Needed, we're obviously getting Middle School Number 6 open just as we reach a deficit in the classrooms that we were anticipating needed. And as you go out for the 10 years, those classrooms slowly just trickle off. But as of right now, we do not anticipate needing Middle School Number 7. Our high school numbers actually did not dip last year, they just didn't grow as much as we had initially anticipated. And obviously, they're going up still over the next 10 years. Good news, though, is in our 10-year projection, the highest that we get is 2,034 students per high school, which we have learned from experience, well, maybe not great, is workable, and we can make them fit. This is, we added this one this year just to show you a reminder. We did this in August of 2015 when we were talking about the fourth high school. And those two dashed lines are where we really thought we were going to be for a very large chunk of time, and that's why we said that we needed the fourth high school. As you see, as that line gets over 8,000, that is where we would start to think about an additional high school. But as you see from our 50-year projection, and the red line on the top is actually where we're kind of going. We're only going to be over that 8,000 for a few years, actually, six years. So we do not anticipate at this time ever needing a fifth high school. We do not anticipate needing a fifth high school. And actually, because of this, we also think that we might not need a seventh middle school as well, as long as this graph holds true. This will need to be redone, excuse me, this will obviously need to be redone. But the good news is that 750, which is the new builds that we are always building our projections on, is pretty much holding true to where we've been going.
Does anyone have any questions? I know Mindy sits on the committee, and Dave is on the committee as well. Does anyone have any questions of Angie, or Dave, or Mindy?
Well, I got all mine answered in the Facilities Committee meeting, which, thank you for standing in for Sharon tonight, I appreciate that. And basically, the message is, we're still growing.
Yes.
And I will remind the community that we did not sell the bonds for Elementary School 17. We will issue it as needed.
Right. I'm glad you brought that up.
So we don't have to go back.
Yeah, and we're not paying on them either, so they're not incurring, you know, any debt on these. But I did want to clarify, so Angie, you said, okay, we know Shell Meadows just opened, and we're going to push off Elementary 17 to 2025, 2026. But then you said you think we're going to need 18 and 19 elementary schools as well?
Yeah, if you, if we go back to that slide. So where we start to see, if you look at the top one, the available classrooms that start 503, if you follow that over, the numbers underneath it, where it shows you negative, that's where we say we start to need a new building. So once 17 opens in '25-'26, even with our anticipated growth, in that '27-'28 school year, we get down to 12. And we've determined that anything under 16 is when we would really have to start heavily shifting kids. And it would be wiser just to open a new school and to redistrict in that way.
Okay. All right, any other questions? You did a great job.
Very good. Well done.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Dr. Jack Fetti with the Board Policy Update.
Good evening. The Board Policy Committee met a few weeks ago to review a lot of different policies that are coming up. And at the next board meeting, I'll be bringing you a packet of all of the other policies that were addressed at that meeting. But this one policy is for review tonight, a revision to the public participation policy. I tried to summarize the changes here. The committee's recommendation is to allow, to reduce the time for speaker, to allow for more speakers in a public participation setting. Also, to clarify the rules for public participation, to allow the presiding officer to arrange comments by topic for purpose of flow. And then also to provide for an alternative participation option for people who wish to submit formal written comments to the board other than by email when they choose to not come and participate in public participation. Does the board have any questions?
So the last bullet is, like, at the State House, like, if you can't make the committee meeting, you can submit written testimony, and then they put it as a PDF, so that's how that would be.
Correct. That's the intent.
Mindy and LaKeisha, you're on the tech committee, do you have any comments?
We are on that, and we, so normally, the Policy Committee gets a lot of new policies brought down by NEOLAW, and that's an organization that, you know, all issues in public schools and rights policy, so we go through that. We both thought that this one should come forward because in the five years I've been on the board, there hasn't been a lot of public participation, and we've had a lot, and we're not able to hear as many people. So we thought we would, because it's not part of the NEOLAW policies, changes that are coming, we wanted to bring this one forward first.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Krista Davis is next, is the licensing agreement. We've already approved one licensing agreement, and just as a reminder, the licensing agreement creates a new revenue stream by making money off the trademarked logos that the district has. So we want to discuss this new licensing agreement.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just to recap our brand project work, we, in our strategic plan, had the goal of establishing a brand identity. So Phase 1 was accomplished in 2018-2019 with the district rebrand. And then Phase 2 was the building level brand work for each of the individual 26 buildings. To be clear, there's not a Phase 3 of brand work to implement the brand. When things are ready to be replaced because of normal wear and tear, that's when those items will be replaced. So we aren't ripping up turf or gymnasium floors. Signage in front of all of our buildings will be replaced, for example, over the next three to four years because they've been on a phased replacement schedule with permanent improvements. So that is an example of how the brand will continue to be updated and implemented. But tonight, we're talking about the licensing program. And the goal of our trademark and licensing program is to protect all of those logos and marks that we have and to create a modest revenue stream. So we will expect a return on investment beginning in 2022. And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel, you mentioned that we've already approved one contract that was with K-12 Licensing. That is a vendor that we're working with that works strictly with the, what I would call, big-box vendors. So Target, Walmart, Kroger, Meyer, et cetera, work through K-12 Licensing to sell our merchandise. And I want to just note, kind of an asterisk off to the side, that you may see our old marks in some of those stores, and that's because part of the agreement is that they are able to sell off all merchandise in their inventory before ordering the new merchandise, so they should be just about there. Then, moving forward, we are talking about our affiliated vendors and our non-affiliated vendors as we look at the licensing agreement for tonight. So affiliated vendors are those that work with our PTOs, our booster programs, those folks within our organization to sell those products that they have so that they work together to create whatever it is that they need to have without paying the revenue stream. They also could include organizations that provide new uniforms and other items with logos on them. Then the non-affiliated vendors are those people who are wanting to sell our logos and marks on items in their retail stores. And they will be asked to pay, if they would like to participate in our licensing program, they will pay a royalty percentage of 10% of the received sale of their goods and services tied to any of our brands, spelled out in the licensing agreement, which is in your exhibits. All vendors that are approved to be part of our licensing program will be listed on an approved vendors page on our district website. So beginning tomorrow, we will be updating our website to include a whole section on the licensing, provided you approve this template. And we will include a vendor application, the process that they would go through, and then the agreement that they would sign and submit back to us. The revenue will come back every six months, and we've worked closely with the Treasures Department to work out how we'll track those items, the dollars coming in, and submit those. I believe it's, what are the months this is happening? October and April, yes, thank you. And so the revenue will come in during those two times. And so we have already been talking with a lot of vendors in the community that are interested in participating and look forward to including them in our process, in our licensing program, and growing that as more vendors become interested in participating. And then moving forward, not this year, but next year, we will be conducting a workshop for those people who are interested in participating so that we really are partnering with them on what, how to use the logos and marks, on whether it's spirit wear or other items. Just a vendor I met with yesterday talked about all the different types of items that they could offer in an online store that are beyond the, you know, t-shirt or sweatshirt that you might see.
Would that be available on our website?
That would be available on a separate link that we would provide through our website, yes.
Any questions for Krista?
No, I think this is great. No, I think this is great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of our discussion items. Now we have board action items. So I would like to present board action items A through C for approval, please. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Sorry, Mindy?
Second.
And Kevin second. Okay, Mindy and Kevin. Call the roll, please. Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rafe, you have some action items as well?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to present superintendent action items A through G for approval.
And those are all the superintendent action items. I do want to call out that the substitute pay increases go into effect October 19th. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now I need a motion to go into executive session pursuant of Ohio Revised Code 121.22G3 for the purpose of conferences with our attorneys concerning pending or intimate court, not intimate, imminent court action and Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G5 for matters required to be kept confidential pursuant of the state or federal law. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
And we will not have any further action when we come, just to adjourn. And the next meeting will be October 28th here. Mrs.?
Hello?
Yes. Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody who stayed for the entire meeting and who attended, thank you.